I'd like to call and order the Southborough School Committee meeting of Wednesday, March 14, 2018, and the first item is the public hearing for the fiscal year 2019 budget.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Capra, as is customary each and every year, once the school committee does approve the budget and before moving to town meeting in April, we do hold a public hearing on the FY 2019 operational budget. And I would like to share with you that the Southborough Public School Committee has identified its priorities for the FY 2019 budget. These budget priorities are included in the public hearing document. There are copies of the document here. There are also copies of the document through Central Office, and it will be posted on our website as well for folks to take a look at. The Southborough School Committee is committed to providing an excellent education for all students in a very cost-effective manner, educationally sound and fiscally responsible. It commits to a strong cooperative working relationship with town governments in the development of the school budget and the involvement of parents and community as active partners with the school. The budget priorities and the mission of the Southborough School Committee serve as guiding principles by creating a framework for discussions and decisions taking place throughout the budget process. As mentioned, a copy of the FY 2019 School Committee voted and approved line item budget is available online and also at Central Office. I will be providing a total of the FY 19 budget subcategories by DESI, Function Codes, Department of Elementary Secondary Education, as part of this public hearing process. The school committee will invite comments at the end of the reading of the FY 2019 budget and then close the budget hearing. So I will begin. And there's also a copy of the public hearing document in my packet as well. Function code F-1000, District Leadership and Administration. This includes school committee, fiscal audit, and the Southborough Public Schools portion of district-wide administration staff and operations, including Assistant Superintendent Finance and Administrative Services, Human Resources, Administrative Technology and Legal Services. $610,997. Function 2000, Instructional Services includes supervision, principals and principals office, building technology, teacher salaries, teacher specialist salaries, substitutes, library media salaries, and equipment, professional development, textbooks, instructional materials, instructional equipment, general supplies, instructional technology, hardware and software, and guidance. $10,978,287. Function code 3000, Other Student Services includes health services, student transportation, and student body activities. $845,086. Function 4000, Operation and Maintenance of Buildings includes custodial services, custodial supplies, heating, electricity, telephone, gas, and gasoline, water, sewer, maintenance of buildings, maintenance of equipment, networking and telecommunications, technology maintenance, and maintenance of grounds. $1,691,826. Function 5000, Fixed Charges. While many of these fixed charges do not apply to the Southborough K-8 system because it's part of the town's budget, there is one area, rental of land, building, and equipment, that does apply. But just for an understanding of what this function code covers, it includes employment, retirement, health insurance, life insurance, Medicare, SRTAX insurance, workers' compensation insurance, unemployment compensation, comprehensive liability insurance, rental of land, building, and equipment. $4,100. I'm sure everyone's wondering with all that, what does that cover? It actually covers the rental of our postage machines. Very important, even with email. That is the regular education budget as part of the FY 2019 budget totaling $14,130,296. All of these function codes are repeated under the second part of our budget as presented in the area of Student Support Services for Special Education. Function code 1000, again, Legal Services, Administrative Technology and Instruction. $17,800. Function code 2000, Instructional Services, again, the South Grove's portion of the Director, Assistant Director of Student Support, and also salaries for teachers and specialized support personnel, professional development, instructional technology, and psychological services. $4,631,617. Function 3000, Other Student Services, including health services and transportation, in this case, special ed transportation costs. $510,608. Function 4000, Operation and Maintenance of Buildings. This is, again, a very large category under regular education and special ed. It's really a small amount because it really just refers to new equipment under the special ed section of the budget, and that is $4,500. Function 9000, Programs, Non-Public Schools. Payments. This represents payments of tuition to out-of-district educational placements. $1,111,165. And at this point, I would also make note of the footnote that is in your document. The line expenditure in the operational budget is offset by out-of-district tuitions which are charged to circuit break of reimbursement of $652,699. The total special education budget represented in the FY 19 budget, $6,275,690. And that is a total for the FY 2019 approved operational budget, $20,405,986, which reflects an FY 19 budget increase of 3.16% or $624,728. There is a full line item budget available, approved budget from last month's meeting online. And again, we would certainly be happy to send that out to anyone who has an interest. There's also additional copies here tonight.
Okay, I guess we can open the floor up if anybody has any questions or comments. Okay, so I guess I need a motion to, at this point, to go into executive session?
I think we might want to close the public hearing first. If there's no comments from the audience, we might want to...
Yeah. Do we need a motion to close?
You can make a motion to close the public hearing. Yes, absolutely.
I'll make a motion, close the public hearing on the fiscal year 2019 budget.
Second. And do we need a vote call?
No.
Nope. Okay. All those in favor?
Thank you.
The public hearing has been closed. And now a motion for executive session.
Order we go into executive session. Exemption number four to the open meeting law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect thereto with the intent to return to open meeting.
Second. Vote call. All right.
Aye.
The Southborough School Committee is now returning to open meeting, and the first item on the agenda is audience sharing.
Hi, Tim Lee. I know it may not always be feasible, but I would like to suggest that as you put your agendas together, you might want to put executive session at the end. That would allow people from the public and the people on your staff who aren't involved in it to leave before executive session instead of having to wait while you deliberate.
And anybody else have anything to share? Okay, the next item on the agenda is New Business Legislative Update.
I'm looking right at Paul Desi. You can see he often has more legislative updates than I do.
Well, we would've had a legislative update if we had the meeting with the legislators yesterday, but it was canceled because of, well, it was probably because of the snow. So I don't really have anything, but it's...
There's a lot of activity, but probably something that could wait till next month's agenda. I think pretty soon we should be getting information about Day on the Hill, too. I haven't seen anything come out. And that's always a good opportunity for us to really talk to with our legislators about what's going through in terms of bills.
I was gonna say, Paul, now I got a note saying, they didn't say postpone, they said cancel the meeting, correct? So do you know, is it being rescheduled?
He said he was gonna reach out about rescheduling.
Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda is Old Business, K-12 World Language Study Group.
So we will be meeting as a whole group, a whole team, on Wednesday, the 21st. So subcommittees are still in the process of doing their research and getting together. The K-5 committee met last week, and I believe, Katia, you said you're gonna be meeting this Monday?
Yep.
And I believe the third group has already met. So we'll have something more to share at next month's meeting.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
And the next item is Kindergarten Transition Update.
The update is, we're still moving forward. Nothing has changed since our discussion last month. We are hopeful that the projections that we put forth will be realized as we move closer to this year, and we know what our staffing is for next year, and that the reductions that we had proposed in our budget will become a reality and will be something that we share with our parent community. In the summer last year, we waited until we had a clearer vision in terms of the overall student enrollment, because that does impact staffing, sometimes up, sometimes down. Also, not only teachers, but our education support personnel. So that, I think, is a good strategy that we put into practice last year, and we would do the same again this year. The information may not be known by the end of June, but we would certainly communicate that out to the parent community. There clearly will be some reduction. It may be a little less than what we proposed. But if all continues on the positive path, then I think we may realize our goal before we thought we would be able to, which is to move to a free-day kindergarten model in three years. So next year will be the second. We did have a member in our audience earlier who was an active participant in our kindergarten study early on, and it was nice to be able to share a shared thumbs up from all the work from the committee and the parent community as well. So that's our update. Good news.
And the next item on the agenda is the Public Safety Building Update, the Woodward Driveway Enhancement.
So at our last meeting, we were all introduced to my Golden Retriever Brady, who flashed on the screen before the presentation of the Woodward Street, the Woodward School Road Enhancement Proposal. Steve and I had an opportunity to meet with the group one more time to finalize that draft that we had taken a look at, and they're off with a new quote. We just received it, but I have some questions about exactly what the quote means, so I did reach out to them. We do anticipate that this is gonna move forward. It might be phased. The initial cost estimates were a little bit higher than we had anticipated, but that's because of the unknown cost of the pavement, the milling and the pavement, which might be part of our project. So as we get closer to a final design, we may need to have some conversations about whether we want to do the milling and the repaving of the driveways at the same time, or can we wait another year to do that. But it's great work. They are moving really quickly, and it's exciting. So it's gonna tie very nicely into the Main Street project. The possibility of us completing our work before the Main Street project is complete and the Public Safety Building is complete is a very high probability. So it could be that of those three projects, ours is finished by the end of this summer perhaps, and then we're waiting just for that connection from the Public Safety Building. I think we're going to have an interesting summer and fall with all of the activity that's proposed to take place in that one area. And it will be an item for our agenda the rest of this year and maybe all of next year, too. But all positive right now. Steve, I don't know if you want to add anything?
So the design proposal, I shared it with staff as well as my school council, and we had some great conversations, some feedback in areas for improvement, but also just a really positive energy that this will certainly enhance the safe access that our students have to Woodward. So very exciting.
And again, kudos to the town. They're partnering with us. Carrie Algonquin's at every meeting. And it's nice to have everyone at the table when we're having the conversations. It speeds up the process and you make sure we're all aligned in the work. And thank you, Steve, for all the work you're doing at Woodward.
And the next item is Safe School Readiness. But before we start, I just want to, just to respond back to the issue that you brought up. A lot of times, we do have executive session at the end of the school committee meeting. There was a reason to have it at the beginning. It's because it was on the agenda, and the school committee had to be briefed on it in executive session. So Christine, if you could take it from there, maybe explain a little bit, you know, I don't know how much we really have to say, but there were certain things that we had to be told in executive session so that we had an understanding of it before we actually spoke publicly to it, so.
I think the one comment that I would like to share is that it oftentimes seems that people react when there's an event. And in this instance, of course, it was the tragedy that took place in Florida. But in our district, the reality is, this is an ongoing conversation with all of our building administrators, with the police in both of our communities. We meet on a regular basis. We review our plans. We practice our safety protocols in our schools each and every year, and we're always looking to review what we're doing and try to enhance what would potentially be impactful if there was an event. And that's ongoing conversations. We meet, I meet frequently with the two chiefs because we combine together at Algonquin, and lots of the conversations are centered around how we can make more connections with our students through the work that we do, through the programs that we start. And it's been a very powerful collaboration that's ongoing, and that work continues. We do know that what we can share, we need to be proud of the work that we're doing and share that with the community. So we're looking at putting together a sort of conversation with the chiefs and the superintendent video so that those parents who can't make a form will have an opportunity to learn about some of the things that are ongoing in our schools. We're always doing a facilities review to look at how we can make our buildings more safe. But ultimately, what is most important is empowering our students with the skills and knowledge so that they can be safe because they have these skills and they have habits of mind that will allow them to transfer those skills into any situation, whether it's being at a mall or a store, at an amusement park. And so those are a lot of the work that we're doing. We're not really focusing on tools, tangible tools, but rather the skills. And that's really part of our enhancement drill protocols that we have in place. We were probably one of the first districts in the area that launched the enhanced lockdown practices, and we did that in a very public way to the extent that we were able to, and had an open forum. And if there are parents who are interested, that link is available on the website so they can actually experience what we experienced when we launched the program. And that's still in practice today. We're having conversations with the police in both communities about expanding our DARE model. That's a very successful model that we have in our elementary schools, and there's a lot of positive energy. I know Keith has talked about this for some time. And we're at a point now where things are lining up so that the conversations are really moving forward in a very rapid rate. But again, it's ongoing. We enjoy an ongoing conversation, not only with our police, but, you know, safety is also fire. We know from the last few days, it's also emergency management protocols when the weather is less than sunny for multiple days in a row. And so safety is a very broad topic. It's not just what we unfortunately experience when there's a tragedy like Florida. So we are always open for conversations and questions, but we're looking forward to providing some opportunities for us to go to the parent community as well and just review some of the things that we do, that we, to the extent that we're able to not compromise the things that we do in terms of security and safety. We're excited about the DARE program, and we're going to continue to support our school resource offices in each of our schools. We enjoy seeing cruisers outside of our school because that means we're making some great connections with our kids. And those connections that we make each and every day with the great work of our teachers and so forth are really proactive, safe school readiness activities. And there is a link on the website. We encourage parents to visit that link. It also provides them with a lot of information about things that we're actually doing. Governor DeValle Patrick, after many, many months and several years of analyzing what makes for safe schools, published a very in-depth document, and we use that as one of our guiding principles for conversations. We survey our practices. We created a self-assessment years ago, and that allowed us to move our practices to a higher level in many areas, and we'll be conducting and launching sort of the second phase of that shortly. Clayton Ryan and Michelle Taunton Anata from the high school, two age groups, participated in a week training
It was about a week, yeah.
around our safe school enhancement so that we had the most current knowledge and had trained administrators in our district, as well as all of our administrators have been trained in the practices and our teachers as well. So I think the good work continues, and our outreach to the parent community and the greater school communities will continue as well.
Next on the agenda is Superintendent's Report to the Committee Enrollments.
No significant change in the enrollments. The enrollment document is in your packet. If I could move along in this section, Mr. Capra, if that would be okay?
Yeah, I'm sure.
Unless there's some questions. The FY 18 Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report is also in your packet. There are no significant variances, but it is that time of year when we're always watchful over every dollar, but we appreciate that we're winding down towards the end of this fiscal budget and looking for ways to support the needs of our schools in some of the work that we have put forth in our budget priorities. So that's in your packet. If we could have a vote to approve until audited, that would be appreciated.
We have a motion. A vote. Second. Pardon me, second. All in favor? Motion passes.
Budget calendar, it's, you know, when we hand this out in October, there's probably two lines and a lot of TVDs, and very quickly it's filled up. And here we are, within a couple weeks away of our town meeting. So April 9th is an important meeting date for Southborough, and otherwise, there's been no change to the budget calendar. We've also included in the packet with the public hearing document the FY 2019 line item approved budget for review. Again, that's available for the community online or just by calling Central Office. We'd be happy to send out either PDF or in the mail a copy of that budget. The capital plan is enclosed in your packet. This is something that we distribute each month, and pretty soon, I think, maybe as soon as the April meeting, we'll be talking about some of the status of some of these items as we plan for our work over the summer. So that's included in the packet. And that's Superintendent's quick summary. A lot of great work and important information.
And the next two items, Educational Policy and Policy Development and Distribution, is none of this time. So the following item is Personnel Items and Distribution of Personnel Report.
And it is a day to celebrate. What we have in the packet, and it may only happen one time in 24 meetings, not just two meetings, no personnel or staff changes at this time.
Never seen it.
Never. I think in seven years, I think in three districts, maybe twice. So this is a memorable day.
And next item is under Communications. This is a summary of the conflict of interest law for municipal employees.
This is something that we revisit frequently, and you do have this in your packet. It could be something that you acknowledge by printing your name and signing it, checking off the box, and returning it to me. We can get that to the town hall, or you can drop it off yourself.
Okay. You know what, didn't we just do this at the town hall?
It feels like it, but we didn't.
Maybe it was last year. Okay.
It's either the slide PowerPoint or the...
Well, at least this way, we don't have to log in and get on the...
Right.
Yeah, there's the...
It doesn't work for that process, which is the yes, state web process. Yeah. That's the one where you actually have to do it four or five times so you can actually get to the end, so you get your certificate that never prints.
Yeah. It's multiple choice, but you can't go wrong. So it is. It's every two, and then, you know, the query checks are done every so many years. So it does seem like we just...
So you're gonna need this copy back from all of us, maybe tonight?
I need this.
Okay, just to acknowledge. So we can probably do that right away for it.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I bring up one other thing under Communications?
Yes.
I got an email, I think, for you, Carrie, from a resident who was concerned about all the snow days and what that means about, you know, going to school later in June and suggesting that we go to school on Good Friday to make up at least one of those days. And I just wanted to bring that up. I know it's kind of late at this point to be changing the calendar and...
No, actually, it's on the combined agenda
Oh, it is?
for next Wednesday.
Okay.
And I, too, have received a lot of ideas.
Sarah is?
And some of them very creative, and all welcome because it's always good to have, you know, a new pair of eyes looking at a situation that we're always, that we seem to be familiar with. I've done a little homework in anticipation of our discussion next Wednesday. And it's interesting to note that this is probably the first time in about 15 or 20 years where we've hit the six-day mark. And so I respectfully replied that by master and law, we are in session 180 days or until June 30th, whichever comes first. We are at our sixth snow day call. One early release, one dismissal, first time in, I think, 11 years or so.
An early, an early release, how does that count? Not at all?
Well, that's an interesting question.
And what about a delay? How does that count?
Well, kind of the same way the early release.
Oh, good. Okay.
So there are two numbers, there are two points, two checkboxes by the state. Not only do we have to prove, log, a certain number of hours, and at the K-8 level, it's basically 900, and at the high school, it's 990, although middle schools have the option because they're in the middle. They can go one way or the other. So we have to show that we've been in session that number of hours. But we also have to demonstrate that we have been open and ready for our students to arrive 180 days. It's not either or, it's a combination. So while we may have hit the 900-hour mark, and I'm sure, you know, we will by the end of the year, we still have to log 180. The fact of the matter is that our schedules allow for more hours than 900. So if we were to do the schedule count, which we have to during certain audit, I think we just had to do that for the coordinated program review, we have to show how many hours were in session. Most schools' schedules far exceed 900 hours. So we, in those times when we early dismiss or...
Openly.
Openly, those hours really
Don't hurt.
don't dip into the 900 or below. So they don't hurt. It's the logging of the 180. So for example, if we were to have a half a day on Good Friday, which would put us out on Friday, not a Monday, June 25th, that day would count. That's one of the 180 days. So we thought that we would put that, Paul, on the combined agenda since kind of all have to be in, would like to be in sync.
That makes sense.
Yeah. There have been a lot of creative ideas.
But we can only come up with one.
And so, you know, one of the other things that we really need to think about, and I try not to think about this at all, is whether or not there'll be another, as the weathermen say, snow event between now and April 5th or 10th. We've had snow in April before. So we could certainly have the conversation next week and check off the box for one day, but let's hope we don't have to revisit that and check off the box again. And with Good Friday, that would still give us a week and a half notice. And now that we have our second read of the religious observance policy, if that were something that we decided... that we decided to adjust our calendar for this year, which we can do, then the school committee can certainly do, the religious observance policy would address any concerns that people would have about wanting to take that entire day. And that was one of the suggestions.
Thank you. And next on the agenda is action on minutes of the open meeting of February 14th, 2018. And I need a motion.
I'll move, then we go to approve the minutes of the Wednesday, February 14th, 2018, open meeting.
Second. All those in favor? And I'm abstaining because I wasn't at the meeting.
You can still, oh?
Well, I know I can go, but I'm just, I just, I don't, I don't really know what went on at the meeting, so. And bills and payrolls and agenda items for the next month, the, I guess we have the FIN school improvement plan.
Anxiously awaited, excited about Clayton's first improvement plan.
I'm excited as well. We're excited, too, so.
We will have a town meeting recap, and we will be posting for a brief meeting prior to the school committee, to the town meeting, as we customarily do each year as well. I do believe we have a technology presentation in April from Julie Doyle that was requested, and we thought we'd move that to April. So, it'll be exciting, even lots of information to be shared. And maybe, well, Good Friday will have happened, so we'll just have to do a long call on that one. We could do the after effects.
And the last item on the agenda is audience sharing. Is there any audience that would like to say anything? Okay, so I'll need a, Christine?
I just really want to acknowledge the tremendous effort of our safety members in our community who really helped us open our schools. Many of our schools, our last school did not come back online until Saturday. We had intermittent power outages. We had, you know, branches that needed to be cut and cleaned up so that when the students did arrive, it was a safe, clear pathway for them. Our custodial and maintenance crews worked pretty much around the clock. If they weren't here physically, they were on the phone. Technology folks did everything they could to address phone issues, and Terry alluded to this before we went on camera, that there were some sort of frying of wires along the way, and just the collaboration with the safety officials in the community that really brought about the call and the awareness that we just weren't ready to open on that Friday was tremendous. A lot of phone calls, a lot of online conversations, and I just also wanna thank, you know, the principals for always keeping it positive and being engaged in their buildings. Just because we're not here doesn't mean we're not online, and lots of conversations are taking place. So, the work that the folks did in town, the DPW, the fire, and the police was just yeoman's work in difficult situations, so I just wanna acknowledge their effort on our collective behalf.
I kept calling and telling them to put my house ahead of the schools. I wouldn't do it. I said I was a school committee member, still wouldn't do it.
That didn't do it.
Didn't work.
You just said we have an early morning meeting to go through larger and to follow that road.
And I also wanna comment on Keith and the other schools' work with the National Movement, otherwise known as the walkout in the nation and how it was handled in our district. I think it was done, you know, tremendous, tremendous work at all levels, and Keith, I think you've communicated out to the parent community already. I don't know if you wanna say anything?
Well, it was a proud day for Trotter. We had a couple hundred students participate. They came down to the auditorium, they stayed indoors, and, you know, they, a lot of them had a lot of thought and curiosity, a lot of questions, and they didn't hear from us. We weren't lecturing to them. They heard from fellow students about why they were walking out, and that was actually the question that Mr. Hershak posed to them. And it took one very bright student, eighth grader, that got the ball rolling, and there were about 25 students that were, had the courage to stand up in front of 300 of their classmates and share their thoughts on the matter, and it was a, it was a very proud moment, and we applauded them for that, and then they very, we had a moment of silence at the end of the 17 minutes, and they were back in class, and they, you know, were able to reengage very quickly and knew that that was their opportunity, but that opportunity had closed, and now they were to return to class, and they did so. That made us all very, very proud of them today. So, today was a good day for Trotter, and there may be future discussions that we have. Tomorrow, students will be having a kind of a summary conversation with what happened at Trotter and in the nation in social studies classes so that every student has the information, and that's, I'm sure, gonna generate some more questions and conversation, but from that point, we're open to what our students wanna do, and we'll try to support them in any way possible, and I think they were very appreciative of that. I got a lot of thank yous afterwards today, so we'll see what tomorrow brings.
It's so good to hear, you know, because just watching it, I've seen some of it on TV and hearing the story here, how respectful the kids are.
Very.
And, I mean, it's just a good generation of kids, you know, it's, I think they can be very proud of their behavior.
They can, and they were so respectful of each other's thoughts today that after every student spoke and had the courage to stand up, and I can't get away from that because standing up in front of 300 people is not an easy thing to do, and to do that and to share from your heart your feelings in a very, you know, just, it was just, it was so middle school. It was awesome. It just had all the flavors of it, and the varying degrees of knowledge and thoughts about it were just, you know, that's why we do our work, you know, that's why we're here, to hear what we heard today, and after every student spoke, they got a round of applause. So, that's where that respect factor came in. They respected each other, they respected the moment. No one tried anything crazy. It was very, I mean, they were raising their hand to talk, so it wasn't like they were competing for airtime. It was done with a high level of respect, and that, I think, aside from anything they mentioned today, we were most proud of.
And we talked about safe school readiness. That's a perfect example of safe school readiness. The fact that the administration and the students themselves were making connections with one another, and they felt safe to do so. That's a very powerful piece, a very powerful proactive piece of safe school readiness that oftentimes is overlooked but is so critical for any plan to be effective. Just the dialogue, for the teachers to know our students, for the students to take a risk, to feel safe, to express their points of view, and to be so well-supported by others and letting them have a voice.
It was a good day.
It's great.
It was great. I thought it was a great idea, too. I mean, it just seemed like a much better use of time than going outside and doing, I don't know what, so, kudos to the whole administration for coming up with that.
Didn't they say today, they also, at Algonquin, they had people, they're getting people signed to vote? Was that also with this? So, there's good things that come out of this, you know, get people engaged.
And while our legislators weren't meeting with the adults, they were there today in meeting with our students, just as important, if not more so.
Is there any sharing? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll move it to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Meeting adjourned.